The Berlin School Committee meeting to order. We do have some payroll going around. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, I think I had just...
Make a second first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I seconded that. Thank you. Please excuse me. Do we have the tri-meeting minutes on January 6? It's just copying my vote, it's just say seconded by Yildiz. I think it says Martesca. Am I looking at the right one?
Which one is this?
Be adjourned, the tri-minutes?
That would be at the very end on future agenda items.
So that they're all exactly the same?
Yes. No problem. That was the only correction I saw. So without further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We did receive a communication just today, and I would like to read that communication. This is from Ruth Blanden. She states, "Dear Angela, it is with regret that I am writing to inform you of my decision to resign from my position on the Berlin School Committee effective immediately. My other commitments have become too great for me to be able to fulfill the requirements of my position on the committee, and I feel it is best for me to make room for someone with the time and energy to devote to the job. It has been an honor and privilege to represent the students and community of Berlin. I wish the organization only the best for the future and regret any inconvenience my resignation may cause. Sincerely, Ruth Blanden." So Ruth has been a huge asset to the school committee. I think she's served at least nine and a half years, not maybe a little more. She's been a wise and pragmatic voice for the community. So she will be missed.
Yes, she will.
Next, do we have any petitions and audiences related to items on the agenda? Can I make another comment about that? So we will be looking for someone to replace Ruth for the rest of the year until the May elections. And we do that by appoint, the Berlin Selectmen and the school committee get together and appoint someone to complete her first year of this term. So if anyone is interested, please contact Tom or me, and we can tell you more about what's involved. Or you can speak to Nadine as well.
And also just to state that Ruth actually had been appointed as a two-year seat. So that position would be open as a one-year position come May. So this is for now, and then it would be on the ballot for a one-year position.
Right, that's a very good point. It's a good test-your-feet-in-the-waters opportunity for someone, I think. Okay. Moving on, do we have any other petitions or audiences related to items on the agenda? Okay. Is there anything that Link would like to report this evening?
I just have a couple.
Valerie Muldoon?
So the first thing is, I finished scheduling all the science programs for the entire school. So I was able to get each grade their own science program. I asked Deena for the preschool. She usually does a hands-on nature program. So if she follows through and she does that, then I came in, actually Link gave me $2,500 to work with, and I came in at $2,400, $2,500.
That's great.
So I'm thrilled. We've got a couple of fine details to work out with space, but I'm very, very pleased that that's been done. And I'm really happy that the kids can have some more, you know, individualized, smaller groupings and have that opportunity. I can't remember if I mentioned it the last week, but we had to have the Elb of the Strand. We ended up making over $1,000 off that event. So we can't wait to see what we have in mind to spend that. We got an $800 grant from the Berlin Cultural Council, and that's going to be for our second cultural event, the New England Percussion Group, on May 22. We're still hoping to have a STEM night at Berlin Memorial on March 11. And we rescheduled the STEM meeting for this Thursday. We had to cancel Link and the last meeting because of the pipe burst, and the alarm wasn't set. So we couldn't have any events in the school this evening. And just the next link meeting is Thursday, February 5, at 7:00. Say what I mean?
Awesome job.
That's great. Great work.
Superintendent?
I do not have a report this evening.
Okay. Director of Financial Services?
I don't have anything to update today.
No updates? Okay. Mr. Campbell?
I wish I had anything to say, because then we could just all go home. But I have a couple of things, so thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time. And before I begin, just to kind of publicly acknowledge the generosity of our president, Link, the science program is just huge, and we're all so... I know the teachers are really excited. And that was a lot of work to get that organized, or all these different options and different opportunities. And I know that we spent a lot of time on getting that done. We're so grateful, as we are for so many things that Link does for our school. It's really nice. So a few things this evening, I probably didn't hear, we had a little bit of a bonus at school the last week. I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed in terms of numbers and what happened and what we did about it. We kind of began to hear from parents through social media that a lot of kids were getting sick. When we came in on Monday, we had close to 25% of the kids out ill. And we had had discussions previously, even though this section was out of town, about under what circumstances we would look at canceling classes for a day. And we clearly met that criteria. So Karen Molnar took care of all the details of canceling classes. I bring this up in part to compliment publicly the hard work that our custodial staff did. Because not only were they busy on Monday cleaning a lot of messes up for the sick little children, but they worked like dogs on Tuesday to really scrub that building down. And, you know, they did handrails, and they did keyboards, and, you know, there was not a space that did not get washed. They worked really, really hard so that we could be sure to open up Wednesday without anybody having to worry about the condition of the building. I think I said to parents at the time, you know, I felt like I would bring my own kid to that school. So I was comfortable with everybody coming back. And just in terms of numbers, when we got back on Wednesday, we had about 17% of the kids still alive, about 33 kids. By Thursday, that was down under 10%, which is just a little bit higher than normal. And today, we're back to our normal six or seven kids. And although I'm hearing some reports of people who are still home with, who aren't feeling well, it's nothing out of the ordinary. So I think we're kind of over that hurdle. The adults, especially adults at school, the teachers were mercifully kind of spared for the most part, which helped as well. But just a great job, thanks to Karen for handling the media onslaught, which was unusual. When you go to a principal's school, they teach you two things right away, which is you don't want your name in the paper, and you don't want TV cameras at your school. I failed miserably, but Karen got my back, and that all went just fine. And of course, we had to interrupt a well-deserved break, and Mrs. Dexter was right there for us as well.
What is the criteria? You mentioned you used, met the criteria. What is the criteria you use?
We had talked about 20, well, we talked about about 20%.
What we had talked about was that between 20% to 25%, it becomes more of an epidemic at that point. So to be more safe, on the safe side, if you have absences within that range, it's just wise to start considering those options.
Okay, thank you.
Can I jump into, I wanted to thank Karen Molnar, because I know sometimes when the media comes to your school, the school committee chair sometimes has to handle that media. So I was very grateful to Karen for being our communications point person. I thought you did an excellent job, so I just want to thank you again.
Yes, Kim. Nice one.
Yeah, that's her new, her new name. It's Kim. She was under the, underneath her.
Yeah.
And, you know, I guess while we're on that anyway, I did want, I was going to do that at the end, but since you brought it up, I also want to just thank, in my absence, the team that worked together. And I don't mean just the administrative team, but all of the teachers that worked together, and our parents, and the support that the parents gave the school in understanding that we were taking safety measures. The reports that I was able to read was very positive, and I really thank the community for understanding that we're trying to keep our children and our staff as safe as possible. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. I think decisions like that are never tough to make. They're always very difficult, but I think he definitely made the right decision, and, you know, it shows, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, the support that everybody gave and the team, I kept, you know, I was emailing like, oh, I'm more stressed now, right now, because I'm not there to help you. But I also knew that I had a great team that was working together and making the decisions together, so.
Yeah. So there's that. A quick update on the, our district review, the Center for District and School Accountability. We've talked about this before, will be coming actually 98 days from today.
But who's counting?
But who's counting? The week of April 27. We haven't actually had much formal contact with them, but we have because other schools go through this access to some of the information that they'll be looking for from us. And so just before the break, Ms. Castello, Ms. Dexter, and myself sat down and we've kind of divvied up tasks in terms of starting points, things that each of us are going to gather up or create to kind of start to get prepared for this. It's always something, I think anytime somebody with authority comes in to look at you, there's a little sense of trepidation, but I think we're in a good place with this. I'm, I feel like we'll be prepared, no matter what recommendations they make, I think it'll be based on a lot of information. And I think we're in a good place with it moving forward. And I'll kind of keep bringing this up as we get closer, just so that you are both aware of where we stand. So there's that. I've got for you this evening, we talk a lot about data, and you probably know that we're in the middle of mid-year benchmark testing, which is where we look at kids we use, especially with the younger kids, some very short probes, kind of assess how they're doing. With fourth and fifth grade, we use something called MAP from NEWA. Those are longer tests, and with all of the ins and outs and closing school, we're not quite done with those. But I wanted to bring them up just because, you know, we've talked about data before. So this is just kind of a little bit of a snapshot. It's a little hard to talk in depth about this information, because you have to talk about specific children. So this is kind of just a little picture, and I've got a little cover sheet for you. But just to kind of review some of it, the test is given, the form of this test is given to kids in kindergarten through grade three. And I should mention real quickly on this topic, we had professional development last Friday, we had an incredible speaker come in to talk about how do you use AIMS Web, its value, and ways to use it to drive instruction, to improve student performance. She was just incredible. And it was nice to get like somebody from the outside to come in and say, okay, you're doing pretty good, now what about A, B, and C? So that was a huge treat, Carol, on that person for us, and we're very grateful. Just a real quick recap, in kindergarten, we look real hard at letter naming fluency. How many letters can you name in 60 seconds? They're given a sheet with random letters, upper and lower case. It turns out that it's extremely predictive of how well kids are going to do when they get to grade three, when they're reading. You can see that we're still having strong results there. There were just, the graphs are all percentages, so they look a little funky. It's not number of kids, it's percentage of the student body. There were just five kids who didn't make benchmark. So when you dig a little deeper, look at those five kids, four of them have rates of improvement at the 75th percentile, which means they're improving faster than 75% of their peers, which is hugely exciting, because that's a catch-up growth, meaning that they're catching up to what they're doing.
Sean, before you go a little further, I just want to clarify for Tom and Angela is that when you see these two comparisons, KF means kindergarten fall, and KW means kindergarten winter. So in the spring, you'll see the KS one will be filled in the spring.
Okay, so that KF was the first time.
That's right.
That was the first time. So you are seeing improvement, right? Good, that was the question. You're on your way.
And the other piece to remember with that is that we're seeing improvement in that graph, but it's also, remember that the expectation raised from fall to winter. So they were expected to be able to name more letters in a minute than they had been in the fall. So the achievement rate is getting higher. It's not just they're doing the same F, the same rate, they're actually getting better.
Do you have last year's, though?
Although, last year would be a different for kids.
Right. But I guess I'm thinking about what is, what are indicators of how our MCATs results are going to be, right? And how overall student achievement isn't improving year from year? So I think we'd want to see the grades, and, you know, are we seeing improvement there?
Yeah, certainly. I can put that together for you. Grade ones, the next graph, it's the next, it's the app, I'm trying to save paper, because I didn't mind why, because it's really ugly otherwise. Those numbers are roughly the same, and again, you have to remember, the expectation is high. The actual difference there is more the number of students, it's a mathematical thing. Kids in grade one, though, the measure that I looked at is called phonetic segmentation fluency. Sounds real fancy, but what it is, is the ability of kids to hear a word and then pull it apart and do its component sounds. So when I say cat, you give me the three sounds of cat, c, t, t. Surprisingly hard skill for kids, especially little kids. I was always surprised when I listened to kids try to do that. But again, highly predictive of problems or concerns later on. And again, it's something that we're working on in the impact program, which is kind of, because that's a discrete skill that we can practice over and over again.
So is this one of the, I guess, tests that you're looking for here, or is this all of it?
This is one.
So is there an aggregate, is there an aggregate kind of result?
Doesn't it aggregate well? So like in first grade, they do actually eight little one-minute subtests. Letter naming, letter sound, phonetic segmentation, and then nonsense word fluency, which is kind of the opposite of phonetic segmentation. In nonsense word fluency, they're given three and four-letter consonant, vowel consonant words. They don't make any sense, they don't hurt real words, and they have to apply their phonetic skills to them. You know, so I always write nib, which is actually a word, so nib would be a nonsense word. And it's the same idea, so you look at how kids can apply these underlying literacy skills in these unique situations. And the reason they have value for us is that we can look at how our kids are doing relative to each other. But just as importantly, we can look at how they're doing to a much broader group. You know, one of the struggles we have is that we're so small that sometimes our strengths are magnified, and our weaknesses are magnified, and it helps to see where kids sit in a bigger pool. And they actually do very well, you know. And that's attributed to some of the hard work that the teachers are doing. Last year was the first year we did this, so you're right, there's some interesting transitions between the different grades. Because part of this is, it's us getting better at test giving, it's them getting more used to being tested, because this was all new just last year. So we're still growing with that.
If I may, on some of these scores, too, what's a little bit tricky is we've had a couple of new students that just came to us right after break, so we don't have their fall score, and they're new to us, so we don't know how their growth would have been from the fall to the winter, yet they're in our winter calculation. So first grade and I believe third grade are the two biggest grades that we have, we don't have their fall benchmark to add to this. So it's something to think about as well.
The other issue in terms of new students is that we've had a few new students who have been, for whom English is not their first language.
Right.
And that can be a huge shift. And that impacts, when you look at grade three, you know, a significant part of the change for grade three, which is back page. You know, you look at the graph, and you know, this is not a third off. The reality is, because the sample size is so small, you know, a few kids make a big difference in the numbers, but a significant part of the decline in terms of kids meeting benchmark is these children for whom they're receiving significant health services. So in second and third grade, we look at reading fluency, and one of my colleagues would, he snapped at me, because when we say reading fluency, it's just how many words can they read correctly per minute, and we use that as a benchmark. That actually becomes more predictive of how they'll do on state testing.
I was going to make a comment after Tom's comment about an aggregate score, but since you're using this to drive instruction, isn't it more important to have these individual segments of the test, because clearly you could drive in one area and not another?
Right. So that when we look at, because the other thing we're going to talk about is our impact block, the flexible grouping that we're doing in the mornings, is we use this information then, in part with a couple of other things that we teach our people, we use that information to kind of decide, you know, what skill we want kids to work on. So kids who are still struggling with, you know, what letter is this, in that flexible grouping, regardless of where they are in the school, they can practice that skill with an adult. Kids who've mastered that but are still struggling with letter sounds go to a different group. So the separate little subtests are very helpful. They're hard to aggregate into a meaningful composite score. You kind of can look at it, you know, if they've made benchmarks here, and here, and here, you know, you're happy there, and if they've made all four, then you're happier still. But it really boils down to, and this is why I think we're very fortunate, how well teachers know their students. They can talk about, geez, you know, yeah, this kid didn't do very well on the subtest, but here's why. And sometimes they'll put it like right into the notes, you know, a child who was sick. And of course, there's a little bit of stomach bug going through all of these numbers. Kids are starting to feel funky, or, you know, they're aware of the buzz in the building. You know, so some of those other things. So everything that we do in terms of data, data drives your instruction, but the teachers drive the bus. I guess that's kind of where that's going. So I wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of where we're at mid-year. We can do four or five next time. And then, you know, if you want, you know, if you make a list of other things you'd like to see, I can certainly pull some stuff together. That year-to-year thing?
Year-to-year.
Yeah.
I think especially as we're talking about a scorecard, right? I think that's one of our topics, of how we're doing with student achievement. These are great indicators, right? And how we can look at these in a scorecard format to give us some quick understanding of are we seeing improvements, where we see challenges inside.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, you know, there's different ways of looking at it, just looking at last year's kindergarten to this year's first grade and see where they are, but they're not the same subtests. So you wouldn't be looking at apples to apples in that regards, but it would be good to see like what you're saying, like if we looked at kindergarten last year, kindergarten this year, and to see where we are, where our strengths and weaknesses are moving forward. So I think that's a great, great idea as well.
I think one of the things you'd see, like if we were, I was just having this conversation today, we have for this part of Worcester County, we do have, an unusually high number of kids who come in knowing very few letters or letter sounds. I mean, in this era of Dora, Sesame Street, and all of these different resources, a lot of places, kids come in more prepared sometimes, and part of that is just, it's just, it is what it is. And so one of the challenges then for our kindergarten teachers becomes, okay, how do we address that? You know, they're coming in, we've got kids who came in, we had a couple of kids who came in knowing just a few letters, who didn't know the first letter of their first name, for example. So they did a lot of work around letter identification, and they did a very intensive grouping beginning of the school year with all the kindergarten kids to work on letter names and letter sounds, which I think is paying off hugely now. You know, so a lot of work's gone into that.
Do you, this may be more a middle school issue, but do you find at the grade school level any issue with children not applying themselves to their full potential when they take an AIMS Web or a MAP?
It's the exception, right? We spend a lot of time talking about, you know, the value of effort. There are a couple of kids from this, from, I think you're, that's a middle school issue. Down here, they're still very invested in, I want to do my best, I want the teacher to be proud of me, my parents are going to see this.
Good.
You know, they're still scared.
Right. So that helps us know that the data's pretty much accurate.
Yeah, yeah, especially this data, you know, these kids, in part because the assessment's so short. The longest test these kids get is only eight minutes, and it's, you know, one of those ready-to-go things. MAP is a longer, it's like, you know, they can spend up to an hour sometimes on that test. And for some of those kids, you see testing fatigue, where they just kind of get tired.
Sure.
But again, not too much of the other.
So we'll be talking about the MAP test at the next?
Yeah, there are two things going on there. We're behind because of school closure, some sickness. The other thing is that we have to wait until the schools are, all the schools are done, so that the window closes and we get the district information, because it only happens after all the testing is complete. And you want to be able to compare all of that.
You know, also, I think what I'd like to do is bring to you at the next Berlin School Committee is at Boilston, there was a request from the school committee members about the assessments that were done, that had been done, and the percentages. And so Paul Goodheim, Carol and I had spent some significant time putting that all together to see exactly, you know, time on learning versus time of testing. And so I think it would be great for me to bring that to you as well, so that you all have a copy of that. It was quite an interesting activity. We actually enjoyed the activity. We showed it to John as well. It was just a great exercise to do, because it put the assessment percentages into a proper perspective than feels like, seems like. It actually gave us a statistic of what it is. So I just made myself a little note to me to bring that to you as well. It was a good exercise, and John agrees with what was on there as well, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It was a great one.
And you don't really think about it until you see it all on my page.
Right. And I didn't think to bring that with you, for you tonight, but I will for next time.
More things really quickly. I mentioned earlier that we're into our second round of flexible grouping, we call it impact. It's instruction made powerful for all children today. I forget, one of the teachers gave you that one. So we used the information from the first round of instruction, combined with some of this data and some teacher input, and regrouped kids for a new one that just actually began today. So we're excited about that. And then just the last thing really quickly, I just wanted to make the two of you aware of the great work that's happening with technology. The addition of Mike Belanger in our school has just been huge for us. He's introduced, I was in there the other day, he was working with kindergarten students on Excel spreadsheets, trying to get them to understand column versus row. I gave him a lot of credit for trying, because they were, while they were really excited about columns and rows, but, you know, he exercised tremendous restraint and patience with them. And that's probably because there are still some adults, myself included, who start to think about columns. And I'd go, okay, so that's not rows. So he's done, just a great job. He has some of the older kids participate in something called the Hour of Code, which they did up here at the middle high school, but it was actually computer programming for young people. So the kids all did this hour of code, they all got those certificates, and exposed them to something that, you know, will be their future. And so we're just, you know, it's been, that investment has paid off just hugely for us. And he's there as a resource for teachers. I know some of the teachers would tell you the things that he's helped us with in terms of accessing the web and better utilizing blogs on our own web pages and stuff like that. It's just been great. So that's where we're at. Ms. Muldoon already stole my upcoming events donors. She's got you all the upcoming events, other than the grade one patriotic program, which is February 12. I'll put that in your calendars. And that's, if you have no questions, that's all I have.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Great report tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next, we are moving on to business item. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Young.
And I don't know if John even noticed, but Sarah asked last week if we could change the patriotic program from February 12. So I want you to save that date and not do anything else you might want to do.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, for saving me from myself.
Thank you. Moving on to business items, the annual report to the town. Tom, did you have any suggestions for changes?
More just of a wording thing, when you're talking about the task force.
Oh, sure.
The task force is comprised of school committee, finance committee members, selectmen, town administrator. So is it town administrator of Boilston?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't just too sure of that. The task force is comprised of members from our school committee, finance committee, selectmen. I would just, because town administrator, I think it should be Boilston, town administrator, since the audience is the Berlin people.
Okay, oh, true.
And treasurers from both towns, or something like that.
Yeah, the treasurer's from Berlin and the town administrator's from Boilston.
Okay, that, okay. How's that? The rest looks very good.
Thanks. Well, I'll make those changes, and I'll send it to you just to confirm I've got the wording right. But I'll call for a vote to accept the annual report to the town with changes.
So moved.
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have just a first read of policy KF, Berlin Community Use of School Facilities. We wanted to streamline that policy, make it more in line with Boylston and Tohonto. I found the former policy a little confusing, so we, it's just a first read, but did you have?
When was the last time the fees were changed? They seem fair, I'm not just, you know, not saying they weren't. I didn't see anything in the.
Well, I think these fees, Tom, I think what we did was we took these fees to match what Boylston and Tohonto's fees were.
Okay.
But when they were changed prior to that would have been when the last, when this last policy was actually revised, which was quite a.
Are they reviewed on?
Two thousand, it's probably 2009.
Okay, that's quite a while ago.
Yeah. I think it was either 2009 or 2010, but it was right around that time.
Okay.
According to Cheryl, Sharon, it hasn't really been rented out in quite some time. So don't think it's very frequently used for a fee.
We just got a request just this past week.
Oh, really? It's mostly town meeting type stuff?
Yeah. Next, our discussion on.
No, I was just going to say, Tom, if you're comfortable with what it is, even though it's a first read, you can make a motion to waive the first read. I'm just not sure if you're aware that that's possible, so.
Part of it is though, so people in the community who see this, if they have any comments about it too, could get back to us. So I'd rather, let's wait till the next, I don't think there's any rush, right?
No, there is not. Nope. I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Okay. Discussion on dashboard on student achievement. So this is something we've been hoping to talk about for quite some time, and we've talked about it a few meetings, and one thing I was hoping we could accomplish tonight was have a discussion, what to call that link on this dashboard, because dashboard does not make any sense to anyone. And also, what sorts of things we might want to include on that dashboard. So on the website, we already have a link to the DESE report card.
Yeah.
And the sorts of things that are included in that. So I was thinking more things that aren't included in that report card, such as if we, some of the AIMS web and MAP testing data, and then some other things I was thinking about. And regarding what to call it, I just thought a simple thing might be monitoring our progress.
Yeah, sure.
Because that's essentially what we're trying to do. I think the purpose of a dashboard is to monitor what interventions we've taken, so we can see if those interventions are working or not, such as the IMPACT groups might be interesting to monitor if we could somehow, that data. And then, also, any new policies that we do. So for example, we did, updated our tardiness attendance policy last year. I, you know, I.
So is this commentary that would go along with, are you, are you talking about having, say, some charts or numbers that is the data, and then commentary about actions being taken to address that?
We, we could, yeah, we could, yes, or just.
Trying to.
Exactly, or I was thinking more reverse, like, take the attendance. Tardy attendance policy was updated April 2014, whenever it was. And that's something we're monitoring, monitoring, did that have an impact? So if you have data before that, you have the intervention data, the new policy, and then the data after that, so you track it for.
Did your policy have an impact on changing that attendance?
Yeah. And another idea I had is before we even put something into the dashboard, I'm wondering if we could have a presentation on it, so using this tardiness attendance, you know, could we have the school committee presentation on it and look at that data and say, yes, I think this is helpful, let's put it in our monitoring our progress link.
Sorry. Take that example, how long would you monitor it?
I think three to five years.
Okay. And then, but that in itself isn't, isn't a result, right? It may be great that we improved, improved attendance, but it's really about, are we seeing grades improve from it?
Right, with the premise being if a child is on to school on time and is there as much as possible.
And there's a relationship between student attendance and student achievement.
Sure, research shows that.
Certainly worth, worth tracking. And it has, I can tell you, made an impact. Attendance, the attendance numbers are much better statistically than they were a year ago. We are not getting, in fact, we're not getting the family vacations, a teacher was telling me not too long ago, that a parent was concerned because they were thinking about a trip, they didn't want to get the letter. The terse letter from the principal that begins, student attendance is an important part of student achievement, and we've kind of cut back on our Disney vacations. Not completely, there's always going to be that once-in-a-lifetime family opportunity, but tardiness is better, overall student attendance is better. So that's something you can demonstrate. I don't know what happens to that number over time, you know, if you look at it over years, you know, I think you're going to get a flat line after a while.
Yeah, I would, I would assume you'd see an improvement and then it should stabilize. Okay. So I guess, I guess I have a challenge of understanding when we would decide we're going to start, start monitoring with data, a policy change of some sort. And I, my concern is, are we setting ourselves up to have something that's not consistent and always kind of out of date? Instead of starting with something that we're always going to have a certain set of student achievement data from year to year shown there. And I don't, I think a good thing to show is student attendance and that type of thing. But some of these other policy ones are very tough.
Right.
To measure. And I don't know if it's so much about, we need, as, as a committee, to be putting policies in place to help improve student achievement as well as our other goals. I think we need to start first with getting some measures out there and sharing with the community the results of some of the tests we have, more so than the once-a-year NCAS types of things that they can get. I think these other things that you're doing, whether it's the MAP testing or the AIMS one, are leading indicators of what we should be seeing or expect to see in the other state-run type of tests. And that's why we should be seeing those type of things. This was something we put together when we had met, and this kind of got, got to some of the testing we were, I was asking about, say, for over time, if you, student achievement, we just took the third grade, so this would be a third grade, or whatever you want to call it. This would be fall, winter, spring, the 2010 to 2011 math, and you would see over time, actually, how the aggregate did there, and then you would see a trend line, right? Hopefully it's going up, but you would see these types of things over time. I think that in another place you would be able to see the other state tests, but this would give you that, a thing that's not showing there. Thinking would give us something around that student achievement over time. That's what I was asking about. Can we get this in an aggregate, you know, for math, for example? I'm sure there's a lot of elements or categories within the test, but how do we get an aggregate of it so we can show it's aggregate, maybe it's people that passed or achieved whatever that benchmark line is, and we are showing that each time as a result of the test, and we continue to build this out so we see it over time? Right? We're really just now coming into the first time where we have 12 months' worth of data. And it's really to start showing that the improvements or lack of improvement year on year, and sharing that with the community.
Because one of the things you need to do, or what would be important to do, is to kind of track, it's valuable to look at grade level issues, but especially in a school this small, it's also very valuable to look at cohort transition over time. So how did the, when the kids were in second grade, let's look at how they did that in third grade and in fourth grade, and are they getting better at math, for example, over time? Are we catching them up to where? So if 70% of our kids in second grade met our end-of-year benchmark for mathematical skills, you know, does that number become higher in third grade? Do we take the 30 that didn't make it and start to work more with math, which is what we're really getting into this year for, you know, the first time? And how is that, that targeted instruction boosting our overall performance? So you want to look at grade level issues and you want to look at cohort issues, because they answer kind of different questions.
I think we've been hitting that 30%, but in a much more informal way. This is the first year that we're really doing it more formally.
Right, where you can sit down and really.
And have those more in-depth discussions and analysis with each other, where before it was, I think, teachers were doing it a lot more individually.
Exactly. I think teachers were aware, I'm worried about this kid, and now we can articulate more clearly and to more people, this is what I'm worried about. I see that this kid has a problem, but this is the problem, right? And I think that's a huge step forward.
And I think there's data and results that we would share with the community, and then there's some that you don't, right? It's, they're more useful at the action level, right, during the teachers and administrators and that type of stuff. I think this is, this, at the grade level, would help show how that grade is doing over time and our expertise there. Yeah, it's a different set of kids each year.
From the computer side.
But I think also with this is, today, we're very immature with how we share data with the community, right? We don't really do anything. I think we've got to mature over time, so trying to, we want to do all this stuff, which is great, but I think this first year, we really, I think, need to sculpt this down to something we can ask the administration and work on together to get out there.
Yep.
And start walking, and then we'll start getting faster and get more complex over time.
I think it also would be a great idea for John to bring this to a faculty meeting of discussion, because I think your teachers might be able to come up with some ideas that they think would be more prevalent information as well. So I think the feedback from the teachers of what they think would be a good data point.
That would be great.
I think that would be important.
I think we need to make sure we understand who we're talking to with this, right? The audience is the community at large, and it isn't, has a teaching tool, or it's just demonstrate a point in time. In some way, I look at it as how, what should we be expecting on these other state tests? This is, these are those indicators that are leading towards that.
Great.
So then where do we go? Because, I think, we talked about this towards the end of last year, right? We've always wanted to, we want to get something going here. I think we start having, we have the data to start sharing. I'd like, I think we'd like to see it laid out in something, some sort of aggregate type of approach in which we could look at the data.
So would it make sense that where, you know, Angela's talked about having a presentation of the school committee, what that data is, maybe at the next meeting, we can have some information about the attendance for you, because that was a topic, before policy data to now, and then we can have the comparisons of the years on the AIMS web and the MAP, and bring that to you for the next meeting?
And could that be your recommendation of what we would use as, I'm sorry, what was the name?
The data on our.
Monitoring progress.
Our progress.
Right. So that would be kind of your first pass recommendation, what we would share on that.
The one, the lich would be, I don't think I have a faculty meeting between now and the next time, because group meetings.
So, so what if we start it with this, and then we bring it to the, you know, if they like it, we can do that, but if there's something different that the teachers want, we can always tweak and adjust. I mean, it's, it's a website.
I think it's going to be different data that the teacher's going to want to use too, to kind of work with their kids or to demonstrate how they're doing from year to year. So there are different purposes with the data, right?
Exactly.
So I want to make sure where, everybody's clearly understands that.
Right.
This, this is for the community to look at and see how our school is doing. It's also for prospective people who are moving to Berlin and want to check out schools. It's what most families do when they're moving. It's a chance for them to get a snapshot of how we're doing. So I think that this is probably the best and only starting point. We need to do those two factors, but again, I want to reiterate that, you know, data, you know, using the data is what's important to you, and it's also what gets talked about. And so I also, again, I don't want it to be all about testing, so I do want us to keep in mind some of these other facets that we think are important to, to help students achieve.
John, you have a copy of this, you said, on the computer?
On my computer.
I just, I need a copy for Cheryl, because anything that's discussed is public record.
Do you want to keep that?
Can I keep this one?
That.
Okay.
Next, our last item on the business is a community for, open forum date.
Sure.
And we had wanted to do one in February, so we need to pick a date, and we also, I think, need to decide if we just want to leave it open, a community forum, or if you want to have some agenda-type topics.
I think you want to have some.
I think we need to do both, right?
Yeah.
Maybe it's two or three topics.
And then if there's time.
Please bring anything you want.
Right.
Okay.
I agree with you, Tom. I think if you have two or three, then people will know all if that's something that they're, they might.
There's a difference to make.
Right.
And there's a vacation week in February, so we want to leave that week out.
Good. Does anyone want to do it after that week?
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Since you have the Berlin School Committee meeting that starts at 6:00 on Tuesday the 10th, do you want to just have an open forum after that meeting on the same night?
I think we've got to do this in Berlin.
I agree, it needs to be in Berlin.
All right.
And I, it doesn't necessarily need to be attached to that.
Okay.
Is that, is there any other school committee that night?
No.
Could you do the school committee in Berlin too, and make that?
Then it won't be filmed.
Is that a problem?
Well, it goes on, it goes on your Tohonto channel.
Is that a problem?
It also goes on the cable access channel.
They do film in Berlin, right? We've got our selectmen, our selectmen.
Right, but those are, those are, I don't know if they're filmed, are they filmed?
What's that?
They have been lately.
Have they? Who's been doing them lately?
But they're always filmed and posted.
That's why we did stop, actually, stopped filming in Berlin. Here they're filmed.
Why don't I see if I can find out if it can be filmed.
Does it have to be filmed?
I don't know what message you would send by not having it filmed, I don't know.
And I can.
Yes, there we go. I just didn't know if that was a roadblock, you had to have it filmed or.
Do you want to do it that same week, on that Thursday, the 12th?
I can do the 12th. That's Lincoln's birthday, but I can do that.
It's an open forum, we can have a birthday cake.
The 12th is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, that would be nice, then.
All right.
I could do the 10th or the 12th, whichever. You know, if you.
Let's just do it the 12th in Berlin.
And in Berlin.
Yeah.
And call it something different. So what is it, like a seven o'clock star?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I think that's reasonable.
Seven. Community, what's better, seven, 7:30? Seven.
Seven.
Okay.
So we would have it at the Berlin Town Hall, or at the school?
How about at the school?
I'm not, I'm wondering what the right venue would be. I think that one of the town hall rooms may actually be better.
Cozier. Yeah, we could do it at the town hall, the municipal building, you mean, municipal building.
Yeah, I agree.
The school idea and the new cafeteria, the new sound?
Oh, I wonder, it's an opportunity to show off some of that stuff then too. Okay, that's a great idea.
I would love to try out a meeting in that.
Do you think we could set it up though with something other than those? Okay, without the, you know, everyone, big people being crammed into the little chairs.
Yeah, we could reel in the, those chairs in the closet from the gym and just send them around in a big communal circle.
Yep, that would be great.
Cafeteria, can us? Great, okay. And two or three topic ideas for that?
So I was thinking, of course, is regionalization and achievement. Student achievement, those would be my two recommendations.
Student achievement.
Other?
No. I'm just kind of curious what's on the community's mind. Anything else?
They're just getting the message. February 12th, that we could just place all the kids' work.
Yeah, all the student work, yes. Yeah, it's great.
We could do refreshments, we could have the garden.
Celebration right there. Make it a fundraising opportunity. No, we're just kidding. Regionalization, achievement, is there anything that like Link has as a topic, you think? That's been coming and going? Not to put you on the spot now, sorry.
No, I don't. I can come up with it this time that I think. I think those other things are much more important than some of the other things.
Okay.
So.
And, and definitely people, whatever they want to bring, right? As a topic. We really want to make sure we highlight that. It's, it doesn't need to be bound by those.
Right. And then we can just put another agenda where it can just be open topics for discussion.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Thank you. I was just going to ask, how would you work that?
Yeah, open topics for discussion.
So if that agenda goes up, does that go on like your blog or something?
That goes, just like it typically would. Every other time it gets posted, it gets announced. Cheryl will do the same thing like she does as a regular posted school committee meeting.
And you've got to go beyond that too.
Yeah, I think since it's been so many years since we've had a school committee hosted forum that would probably announce it on the online bulletin board in Berlin, the link online, things like that.
Right. If we could send a note to the selectmen and let them know, maybe they can bring it up there. Maybe they can come.
Fincom.
Yeah.
Fincom, select.
So you know, the town of Berlin has their own Facebook, not the neighbors of Berlin, but the town of Berlin Facebook thing. Right, that's, well, that's always good to get any of our stuff out. It's, it's right on the townofberlin.com page. There's a feed right there.
What about asking questions to people in the town about things they'd like to see? Ways that we can just raise the general morale in town and just raise the general opinion of the school in town? I would love to see some improvement there.
So it's ideas that they would have to?
I'd love to see more people band together, try to work towards that.
Yep. Good ideas. Super great.
Okay. Upcoming events, school committee comments, future agenda items. We have the.
Town hall learning versus town hall testing. Next meeting and a presentation on the attendance policy.
And with that, and achievement.
The AIMS web map.
And student achievement.
Oh, and a map test.
Yeah, map test. Anything else?
No.
I'm going to try and go to the next Link meeting in February 10th.
Yes, that's a good point. Do we need to, without, do we have some of her, things she was going to attend?
I'm not sure what she had online to attend, but hopefully within a couple weeks, we can either recruit or someone will come forward to be on school committee. Then we'll need to make arrangements to meet with the selectmen. So that's kind of a priority right now.
So I just have a question. I don't really remember, when Chris had resigned, did you have to send a letter to the selectmen? How did that happen so that they were notified?
They also received a letter. I believe the selectmen also received a letter.
Okay.
Or actually it's the, and the town clerk.
Okay.
It definitely was a town clerk. I'm not sure about the selectmen.
Yeah, because they weren't copied on this email.
Right. That's why I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
With no need for executive session tonight, I'll call for Moche Gojer.
Absolutely.
Second set. Elizabeth.
Hi.
Thank you.